And we're just about ready to get kicked off.
Should've told my husband to look tonight.
So I shouldn't put a big rash on Paul to sign here?
You can.
You can.
But it said right there, no third party.
Alright.
Alright, seven o'clock, let's get started, first order of business, we'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so Dave is gone tonight, Sharon is gone tonight, so it's the three of us that makes a quorum, so we're good there. Which brings us to number three. I think Vance, you've got a lot to read here. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, what would you...
Go ahead and read it tonight.
We met on July twenty-fourth at seven o'clock, right here at City Hall. John and Sharon were absent. Minutes from June tenth approved by first motion from Brian, second by Dave. Special minutes, or special meeting minutes approved by Dave and second by Brian. Brian made first motion with second by Dave to approve the consent agenda. The regular agenda with additions approved by first motion from Brian and second by Dave. Under Onsted Twitchell, the final plat for Lost River, third, approved by first motion from Brian, second by Dave. The second reading of the rezone at Lakeview Heights, second addition, approved by first from Dave, second by Brian. The second reading of fireworks ordinance approved by first motion from Dave and second by Brian. The street reconstruction at Chestnut has been put on hold due to sufficient protests, eliminating any further work. Interstate engineering. Mr. Dolmert presented his monthly report. Dave made first motion with second by Brian to instruct Interstate to move forward with plans and specs for two seventeen dash seven, that's Maple Lane and Seventy-Fifth, and two seventeen dash eight, that's at Northwood and Southwood. Change orders, three for two sixteen dash one and one for two fifteen dash three, approved first by Brian, second by Dave. Auditor Cameron will draw up a proposal for funding the proposed electronic water meters. Portfolios, Sharon absent, John absent, Dave working on interviews for assistant auditor, Brian working on proposed electronic water meters, and Corey. The appointment of Steve Fisher to the assessment committee approved by first motion from Brian and second by Dave. Perry absent, add of no report, and the auditor has continued work on the eighteen budget. We adjourn at eight ten. Okay?
Make a motion to approve minutes.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, John does a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I need to consent if I could jump in here, we have two additions.
Okay.
We are going to add pay request number six for George Hagert. That's two sixteen dash one for one hundred twenty-three thousand five seventy seventy-eight.
Okay.
One twenty-three, five seventy seventy-eight. And in addition to that, pay request number four from KPH, that's Lost River, two seventeen dash one, two hundred ninety-five thousand five fifty-nine thirty-five.
And those were both posted in July, correct?
For work completed.
For work completed, yeah, it was for invoice work completed in July, and that was to pay those, yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, let's see, that's all my...
To that point, I guess that we verify that that work that they've completed so far is...
I prepared them.
Okay, okay.
I prepared them and they've approved them, so...
Okay, alright, good.
I'm acting on Mr. Dolmert's instructions here. He said add them, so I add them.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
That's, that's all I have, Corey.
Okay. Anybody got any other questions on here, otherwise it looks like it's pretty much what we had expected, so...
I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, John makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Brian makes a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, good. So we have the regular agenda.
Yeah, and under that, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Our deputies are in kindred assisting a call, so I think we should perhaps, I think they'll be here.
It sounded like it, they were gonna let me know if they...
Yeah.
Adjust them till last.
Yeah, and if they don't show up, we'll...
Yeah, so let's just, we'll just forego them for now, but we'll just include them if they, if they can make it, okay?
If they don't show, we can show the report that they provided, so...
Yep. We can do that toward the end, then we'll see if they can make it here, so, okay, with the exception of that...
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. John?
Second.
Okay, Brian does the first, John's the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, so Lucas, we'll put you up there, and we'll see what the deputies, when they get here.
Which one do you want to show first? Which document do you want to show first?
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, can we jump to the SSL, because Travis will be here. He had to run back to his office, he said, for Lakeview Heights.
Okay, yep.
So if it's okay with you, I'd like to jump to the SSL.
Okay.
So I guess we're gonna have to hold off, because I think he has the easements with him for that. I had a phone call with them on Thursday with Kevin and Nate to go over those, and we discussed that, and then the letter that we drafted for them, I'm not sure if, I brought the letter, Brian, if you want to show that.
So the assurance?
Yep. So Mr. Mayor, this is one that I showed you, and this is basically just for the, for the sewer line project, saying that the city will work with them whenever they have their development plans drawn up. And so I talked to Kevin about that on Thursday.
Okay.
And...
So, so this is effectively just saying that we're gonna include you in plans and so forth as we proceed, right?
Yeah, it just, it says that the city will work with them under the ordinances, one state.
Just like what ordinance say, you know, just, yeah, okay.
Um, so yeah, like I said, we discussed the letter, and then Kevin informed me that he would sign easements, and Travis has those, and then, um... So yeah, I guess if we have all the necessary easements, then now I would say that we can go ahead and award the contract. And I'm not sure, do you have the one for Doug and Chuck, or are we going around?
I have, uh, you need the amenity part?
No.
The easement.
The easement for...
I have two of them.
Okay.
Oh, it doesn't open here either, I grabbed the wrong vanilla folder out of my desk.
Been there, done that.
I actually was here, realized that I missed a lock-in.
Oh, yeah, they were signed.
Okay, so then I guess, depending on if we see Doug and Chuck's, we'll either use theirs, or we'll bore under seventeen, if that's okay with the council.
I think that's what we had discussed.
Because I mean, we're at a point now where we have the ones that we need to proceed, so...
Okay.
Well, it sounds like it's signed.
My understanding is it's signed.
It's just not here.
Just not here.
We have to get it.
So I'm saying regardless, if we get it, great, if we don't get it...
Right, we have plan B.
Yeah, can still bore under, uh...
Yep.
So do you need a motion to...
To award the contract?
Yep, because now we can do the resolution to award the contract. Now that we have all the required documents to proceed.
That's what we've been waiting to do.
I know, I know, that's why I'm like, you're kidding, right, this, we've been waiting for how long? Is it really here? Pinch me, pinch me, please.
Contingent.
Health Department review.
So we can, we can proceed.
You are to award it, yes, with contingent upon Health Department review, or...
Yeah, the health department.
You know, approval, yeah.
Vance, did you get that?
I'm good.
Okay.
So it's just a resolution to award contract contingent on the North Dakota Health Department approving funding.
Jim, do you have any idea when that might occur, I mean, if we do this tonight, are we looking at another thirty days?
Uh, it shouldn't be that lo, it shouldn't be that long, it is over a million dollars, it has to go for the industrial commission.
Right.
And there is an environmental document that has to be published and received comments on, but we did receive comments back last Friday from the Health Department, we're working on implementing those comments and getting the final documents into them, hopefully tomorrow.
But you didn't see any roadblocks, is probably my biggest question.
No, no, nobody's had any comments that would lead me to believe otherwise.
Okay, that's why my biggest concern was there, so we're gonna have to keep pushing this thing down the line a little bit more, but it looks like we're good to go.
Yep.
Alright.
So...
John, any questions on this thing?
No.
Brian?
Make a motion to approve the resolution to award the contract as stated by Horace Attorney.
I will happily second that.
Okay, John, there's a second, Brian does a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, let's get this thing done.
Wow. Awesome.
Yeah, okay. Alright. You're up on the next one.
So Mr. Mayor, now we can bounce back to Lakeview Heights, second, if you're okay with that.
Go right ahead.
And then Councilman Schmidt, I believe, I, uh...
Which one is...
Should say final plat, there it is, seven twelve seventeen, nope, keep going, right there.
I knew it was there somewhere.
Which one was that, yep, okay.
Final plat, I got your call, final plat.
Yep, the planning commission approved this at their July twenty-fifth meeting. So now this is the public hearing in front of the city council.
Okay.
And nothing should have changed. And this is, for your guys' reference again, this is where the school's gonna go, and then the neighborhood commercial on the west side.
Okay, so we'll open it up for public comments on Lakeview Heights, second edition. Anybody here have any comments or on that? Nope. Alright, then I will close the public hearing, and we'll proceed on, so we've got, we're just, this is the final plat as we're talking about this thing, so, okay. Do you guys have any questions on this, because I mean, we've kinda, we've kinda gone over this...
We've read it like four times.
Plenty of times, so... Alright.
Make a motion to approve the final plat?
Okay, Brian makes a motion.
Second.
John does a second. All in favor say aye.
Alright.
And that is done. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the next item I have is, I wanted to get an update on that, the nuisance property. Vance sent the fourth letter to Vandevake, so I'm just wondering if anything...
He contacted, he contacted me last week.
So he is getting the letters?
He, he didn't say anything about it, but he says he's got some plans, he left me a message, and I called back, haven't heard from him, said drop plans off and see what he's got in mind, but I don't think it's gonna be very acceptable with planning zoning, um, what he wants to do, assuming. It's not gonna fit in our city planning for the future.
Okay.
Then I just want you to know that I haven't received no plan. Like, John talked to me today, but I haven't gotten nothing yet, as of today.
He hasn't contacted you either, I'm gonna assume, or he hasn't contacted you either?
Nope, nope. He did before, but that's why I...
Yeah.
It's very difficult to get ahold of.
And that's why I didn't know if he was getting the letters, but the letter did say that he hadn't until July twenty-eighth to take action. And this is the fourth letter.
Yep.
So now, so now I guess, I mean, it's totally up to the city council, but the next step would be notifying him that there will be hearing in front of the city council, and then you will then decide to...
I'd say we need to have that hearing.
Okay, so it'll be at your next city council meeting, then?
Yeah, that's fine.
Because the deadline is passed, right?
Five, five days' notice after the, the letter goes out, and granted, I don't even think we had to do it, but the mayor wanted to be safe.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure he understands what's going on here, and I wanna afford him all the opportunities to square this away.
Yeah.
I honestly don't think he understands.
And I don't either, and probably because there's been four letters and nothing has really happened.
That's why, let's get him in here the next meeting, and we'll have this conversation, so he knows right away what's happening.
Yeah, so at that, like I said, at that next hearing, then it's the city council determines if they want to hire a representative to take action.
Correct.
And then assess the property.
Okay, so let's make sure he gets that letter, then I want him to have, to attend the hearing for next meeting. Perry, if you do hear from him, let us know right away.
I certainly will.
Alright.
I suspect he might let me know, because tomorrow's planning and zoning.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, just let us know, because I don't, I'm not sure, I'm not even sure if he's in town anymore, you know, for a while, he goes out and does contract work, I get it, but there's been enough time lapse here, so...
And I can send this next one out right away, and that way it's, it'll be two weeks.
If I see him on his property, I'll go talk to him.
Okay, alright, Lucas, the next one.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the final thing I have, just to update you on the Rivers Edge lease agreement, Sarah revised it, and then I reviewed it and revised it, and then it's been sent to Mr. Davids.
So the delay continues.
Mr. Davids' attorney.
Got it, okay. You guys play a mean game of computer tennis, I'll tell you that much, back and forth. Well, let's keep it going, let's get her done, see what we can do. Anything else then, Lucas?
No, sir.
Alright, thank you, sir, appreciate that. Jim, Damon, which one of you two's got the next go here?
Um, I'll go first, we'll just start the top of the list, Brian, you bring up my spreadsheet there. We'll just touch on the important ones, or some of them haven't, a few of them have a change in the last two weeks, so... Uh, the first one is the lining project, basically it's substantially complete. Uh, the lift station lining and coating was completed la, last week. Uh, the only work that remains is lining and coating two manholes, one is the additional one outside of the wet well on station number one, that's by change order, and then the other is another type of collection manhole outside of the station number two over by the elevator, so... Uh, once that work is complete, the project should be done.
So is there an actual closeout of that project?
There will be, yeah, it's, it's got, they're starting funding it, so we have to go through the whole, the whole closeout for...
It does, it has to.
So inspections are planned for when?
Well, we gotta get it done first.
Okay, alright, so that's, we're about, how long?
I would say two weeks.
Still two weeks?
He sounded like they'd be back on the fourteenth to do it, they're out of town, they're doing some other stuff, so they'll be back at that time to finish up, and it shouldn't take more than a couple days, I wouldn't think, so...
I just, this, this whole project's been dragging on for a long time.
Yeah.
I mean, we were gonna be done in April.
Well, on the other hand...
July one was the first one for this.
We did find some other things.
I know, I know, I know.
But...
July one was the official, was the reasonable completion date.
Yeah.
Do we not have a timetable with the contractor on a job like this?
We do, the eighteenth of August is what they're projecting.
Is that the way it was originally set up?
No, set up for the first of July.
July first was the original completion.
But with their delays, are there changes?
But the changes that we have to do here.
Add additional time on to it.
So, what I was gonna ask you guys, you know that coating that they're putting on the manhole? What is the longevity on that, did they, I don't know if we discussed that or not, I know you made a comment about it one time, but I don't remember what they were thinking.
Uh, the, I, it kinda varies up by the conditions, but I would say twenty-plus years on the, in the epoxy end.
Right, so maybe by that time, we're talking about some other replacements, anyways, so...
Yeah.
That's, just getting an idea if we're talking ten years or what, or whatever's going on. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, we'll skip into the water improvement, the water looping along the wall, and County Road Seventeen.
Which one here?
Uh, it would be the project number four.
Okay.
So the water main has been, is in operation now along County Road Seventeen, that's all test to pass. The water main was tested this morning along Wall Avenue for bacteria, there'll be another test taken tomorrow. Uh, that one could be back online Wednesday. They finished up a couple service lines this morning, found two common services, so four houses served off the two lines.
So there, so there are four, well, four houses on two lines, okay, I thought there was another one. Although the one that we think there might be, we aren't sure, we aren't gonna do anything with at this point.
Uh, no, Warren's has got, he'll have water, we aren't breaking his, we're adding one to his neighbor who doesn't have a curb stop. So that work was completed this morning, the other one is, is Vetch's on the corner, and Brad saw the hits, there's a common service lane there, so...
Yeah, I saw that picture you sent.
They broke that up, um, this morning, so this afternoon.
Were you guys able to locate?
I have to go back and talk to them, I wasn't around this afternoon, so...
Okay, we don't have that yet, okay.
I don't have that, exactly what went on in that back yet, so, um, they're hoping to be substantially complete by the end of the week. That would be a week or two weeks before completion, they thought they'd be coming thirty-first of August, so... Um, there's still remaining pavement replacements and some other miscellaneous work, but the pipe work will be done, hopefully by Wednesday or this week.
Was it, yes, you know, it's on Monday, so it was Fri, was it Friday that there was a drop in pressure in the city?
I wasn't aware of it.
I, I noticed it, and I, I was thinking, okay, is that related to this project, because I talked to some of the neighbors, and all of a sudden, like, pressure was down at least fifty percent.
Really?
And I thought, well, it's probably related to, granted, it was probably five, six hours, but I noticed where it was fifty percent, and I thought, ooh, okay, uh...
You said that was on Friday?
Hopefully there wasn't something that happened that, you know, there are other areas of town, so you didn't hear about anything.
I, no, neither Adam or Ben said anything about it.
I wanna say it was Friday when I noticed it, I mean, it was like most of the morning and early afternoon, where a lot of pressure was down dramatically.
I'll look into that.
So, anyway. Wasn't an issue, because by the end of the day, it was back, so, as long as everyone, you know, when they're coming home, they got pressure, and they won't get calls, so...
And what are they gonna do to, to retest that line, being we know it was, you know, the low pressure before, what are they gonna do to retest some of that?
We'll, 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 um, put gauges on it like we did the first time.
Okay.
So basically rerun that test, that you guys with Jeremy and the North Dakota Water...
Do that a bit again, okay.
We'll come and rerun it and see where we're at.
Okay, perfect.
So we should expect pressures to be nine, no, twelve, what were we expecting, some of the pressures to be?
We weren't expecting, we...
No draw?
What do you mean by no draw?
Well, okay, say, finish your sentence.
We didn't have a projected increase in pressure.
Oh, okay, okay.
So...
Alright, we're gonna, we're gonna run it through its tests, and just make sure that we've got that spurt away, okay?
Okay, item number five, seventy-six, I have a ditch clean out, Jeff's supposed to start that this week. Some of the rain might have pushed him back just a little bit. Item number six, Lost River, all underground work is complete, the area base replaced, they did start the curb and gutter, they finished Lost River Road, that's the first road coming into, um, along the river there. Um, progress message number four, that was approved by consent agenda. We did receive, if you go down with attachments, in a, a proposal to install the sanitary sewer lift station. I got a phone call this morning from the developer, and he said he would prefer that to be done as part of the SSL project, put it in with the CDO SRS project. I don't foresee that being a problem, but I just, he just suggested that this morning, so we have to do a little more investigation into that, but it was discussed during the planning and the design, and, uh, the Health Department wasn't against it at that time, so I assume...
Okay, that was my next question, so the Health Department, they just figure that it'd be more of, I won't say a convenience, but being everything will be on site there, just make it easier to complete it that way, and at that time?
That's kinda the way that they made a sound deal, and I, and talked with the contractor this afternoon, or this morning, and he said he didn't, it didn't really matter to him, in any way, so...
Either way, it'll work for him.
Yep, as part of the SSL, this lift station was gonna be finished. The change order was only for the wet well portion of it, the pre-gas concrete, uh, the pumps and the discharge, pump piping and the valve manhole and all that would have been put in as part of the SSL anyways, so...
Yeah.
So we're right there, working on it, it's just...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we talked about the SSL.
See, Jim?
Yep.
One question on the SSL, and I don't know, maybe I'm repeating this, Brian and I had a lot of discussion last week, in making sure when this project starts, that we are all under the assumption it's gonna start from Lost River and get to the lagoons first.
To the lagoons?
We're, we're gonna prioritize getting that portion of Lost River, so if something happens where we don't get enough, can't get the whole connection up to the Deer Creek done before winter, that at least that Lost River is connected into the lagoon system, right?
Lost River doesn't connect into the lagoons.
Well, connecting to...
Lost River connects into the manhole at the corner of Seventeen and Wall, and there it turns to gravity sewer, and then the sewage gets pumped from the lagoons over to that point and discharges into a gravity sewer, taken up to Lakeview Heights, and then pumped the rest of the way. So there would have to be some additional work if we wanted to pump that back to the lagoons. It can be done, they're all interconnected, it's just, it would have to be a little bit of phasing of the construction.
I think it was just more of a fallback position, for some reason, we can't bring it all the way up.
It is intertwined, it just isn't designed to take it to the lagoons first.
Right.
Right, okay.
But like I said, it, it could, it can be done.
Uh, that was kind of the point, is that fallback, right, to say, okay, if, if for some reason things fall apart, and we can't get it done this fall, how do we make sure that at least if anybody builds and gets that area done, that they can flush toilets this winter?
Mm-hmm.
Right, and what, what can we do to make sure that, so, it's a contingency, right?
Yes.
It's one of those risks, and how do we manage that contingency?
Yes.
Because the other thing is, the, the lift station up in Deer Creek, have they started on that yet, or is that...
They, I'm not even sure they've awarded it yet.
Yeah, okay.
They weren't, they opened bids on the twenty-sixth.
So again, we are dependent upon them having that done, at the same time we throw that pipe against it. So that's like I'm saying, we got, we might wanna have a, a just in case clause here, so if something happens up there, they don't get that done, we got another way to move it.
Alright.
There was no indication from the regional wastewater that there would be any delay, right?
Not that I was...
I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember back to Ken's notes, and I, I don't think there was anything at this point.
I believe that they have a relatively close completion date between the two projects, that late November.
Okay.
Well, now that we're getting there, we just need to make sure that, I don't wanna go through another development, not being able to flush when we make that commitment.
I agree.
Maybe that's something, we should let Mr. Hanson know from Fargo that we awarded this thing tonight, so that they're, they can realize that we are gonna be moving both this...
Right, yep, good point.
Just that way we can sync this up a little bit?
We do have homeowners wanting to get started and build their houses, and, you know, they're waiting on their plans to get done, and, and by not doing it, it's gonna cost them potentially more money, if they have to wait, so we need to do everything we can to make sure this goes without a...
Now that we're going forward to seeing, we're sure we're synced up all the way up the line here, so...
And with KPH asking for not starting right away, correct?
Uh, that is moved up from what I've heard, it could be within a couple weeks now.
So they will get started around, to the soon?
He said that there was something there, but we're free, yeah, that was just today, kind of in passing conversation, so...
Well, let's get something definite from them for our next meeting, and then same way with Fargo, make sure they're on...
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yep, agreeing.
That way we'll know how this thing all comes together.
Documentation from Fargo.
Well, I guess that's, that's, that's your request, is actually, will we have a project scheduled by the next meeting?
I'll get one.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do, let's just do that.
Yeah, I don't think there's any harder than that.
Because there will be a kickoff meeting here in the next week, I would assume.
Uh, probably not that soon, but we may be doing that, it, it depends on how the schedule's working, so...
Okay.
I'll get a holder, Houser from the city of Fargo.
Yeah, just let him know.
I'll let him know too.
Okay.
Alright, Jim, your next one, you wanted to go over, anything else?
Um, we, I would like to touch on the Olivia Acres sanitary sewer connection. Uh, there was some talk in the office, Kim Stokes and stuff, I am sitting talking with Mr. Carstman about doing some, taking that sewer a little bit further, um, I don't know if he's briefed you guys on that, if that's something we wanna look at. Right now, the letter that we received for service was from just Olivia's Acres, so we have a reported estimate based on, from just Olivia's Acres to the lagoon, so we would have to expand that, I know that you've been in discussions about that, John.
Further, further west?
Further west, maybe pick up some other stuff.
Ken, Ken Stokes has an opportunity with a multifamily apartment complex, which is absolutely gorgeous, you know, a huge opportunity for the city, and it's just, what, another...
Quarter mile?
Yeah, if that.
Is he planning to petition the city to do that?
No.
I mean, that's what I'm just trying to get a handle on what we're dealing with here, is he, you're planning to...
And that, that's typically what we've done, we've addressed the petitions, with where she been, with Olivia's Acres, and then Urban Bristol happens to be the other one, requested water service, and we've addressed that, so we've addressed them on a case-by-case basis.
You don't really wanna, wanna go just on conversations, wanna see something on paper, it says we wanna rock and roll, let's go, okay? So, I mean, if they wanna do that, if he wants to do that, that's fine, but let's get the petition in, so we know, and that way we can get a handle on how much flow we're gonna need to bring up that way, too.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen the, the plans.
Right, okay. But no, I know what you're talking about, if Kim wants to do that, so, okay.
Uh, the other thing is the, the Pet Crossing, I have an email off to the, to the county for what they'd like to see, or what their requirements would be on that. Uh, Damon has the contracts for the design and construction engineering on that, and then the other two street jobs, that received insufficient protest, uh, we have design contracts for, um, for your approval going on designing those, so... I believe...
So that, yeah, so we're obviously, I mean, we had a goal of trying to get that done before school started, So that, yeah, so we're obviously, I mean, we had a goal of trying to get that done before school started, so obviously we're gonna miss that, so... But, uh, do we have an idea when we might have those quotes?
We have to design it first, and that's what your contractor's going before you is to design it. I don't think it'll take much, I think it'll be, I think we're going, it'll be a quick turnaround.
Okay.
So...
Depends on what the county requests though to, to put in there.
Okay.
Okay.
So, uh, that's all I have, if you wanna add something over there?
Did you have Maple?
Seventeen-two, I said.
Okay. Your seventeen-seven, review, and seventeen-eight. Nighttime reading for you.
Jim, just keep us posted on that, if anything changes with the state or anything like that for the SSL, yeah.
Yeah, and then I asked them about the potential for adding the S D S signs, since I was contacting them anyways, for dynamic speed display signs.
Yep.
Drive feedback, so we'll see what their thoughts are on those on, cut out seventeen.
I noticed too, when I was, when I drove out to Garrison this weekend, I just happened to pay attention to that, I saw a lot more of those, you know, the speed limit signs coming up and all that stuff. When we come into town, flashes at you if you're going, you know, five over type of thing, so yeah, more cities are putting those up just to make people aware. So, that way when the cop pulls you over, you can't see, you didn't see that, right?
Right.
Okay?
What, what are the next steps with, uh, the street improvement, the lines fifteen and sixteen there?
Uh, fifteen and sixteen, we have the design contracts for your approval tonight and then we will be going S A B on those.
Okay.
Is that designed, so there hasn't been anything designed on that, on the, anything to do with that?
Which project are you talking about?
The Northwood.
Northwood, Southwood?
Yeah.
No, not yet.
Okay, so the protest, what was the protest supposed to be over?
Protest?
Yeah, that there was insufficient protest to stop the project.
Who just, who explained that?
July...
That's, that's after the resolution necessity is posted saying that there's a project that the city wants to do and then you have the thirty day protest period, which went, expired July twenty-eighth, I wanna say.
The twenty-eighth or the seventh?
I wanna say this, yeah, somewhere in the middle of July, I think. Yeah, um, and so then you have a time period to file written, um, protests with the city auditor. And there were no written protests for that improvement project, so then the city can then move forward with the project if there's not... It required fifty percent of the, um, property owners in that improvement district to protest it. And I don't, you didn't receive any for that one, right? Yeah, so then at that hearing, at the last city council meeting, there, there wasn't any.
Okay, so at this point, if, once it's drawn up, it doesn't have to go through anything to get approved after that?
Well, we would requ, we would solicit bids on the project, if the bids come in reasonably, we would award the project based on that, but there isn't any other, it's all the council now, their discretion, if they wanna award the project or not.
What's the question?
Yeah, there is no, so there, it doesn't matter whoever protested or not?
The period has expired.
Yeah, but you don't even know what you're protesting, it doesn't, there's no numbers to go with it or anything, there's no, uh, there wasn't a sign which...
Preliminary engineering report was posted.
The, the numbers are on there, and I think, was it also on?
It was on the website.
I was gonna say, we did multiple areas, and the city's only required to protest in the newspaper.
Okay, published in the...
Or published in the newspaper, excuse me.
So we're trying to get all this stuff up on the website so that it's all there, so when we do go through these processes, you can see what the numbers are. So, I mean, we're trying to move above and beyond just posting that stuff in the, you know, in the legal notices so everybody understands what's coming. You know, I'm not trying to hide anything, I just want people to understand what we're trying to do, you know, trying to do some of these upgrades. So we are trying to get numbers out there so people know what's going on.
Okay.
So...
Is there anything to do to stop that, like if we went and we asked the neighbors to sign a petition to stop it, do we still have to...
It's already, the protest period is, is concluded, is done.
There is, there is a protest period that we have for that, and that was prior, that's why we put that in the horrors happening too about that, the last, whatever which month we...
Yeah, that was, that was the June, July, June, July issues, where we posted, there was a public notice on Northwood, Southwood, actually all the projects and, and actually Chestnut was the one project that was sufficiently protested and that one got killed.
Yep.
So, uh, but Northwood, Southwood, Maple Drive did not.
Did.
Okay, um, all right, Jimmy, so we need to do a resolution tonight?
I guess the question is, when will we have that design, when are you expecting to have the design for those?
For Northwood, Southwood?
Yeah.
Could take a couple of weeks.
Okay, so by the next meeting, we should expect to see basically a refresh of the preliminary engineering report.
And plans and specifications, updated estimates, so in two weeks, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Is there anything else you wanted to review on the status?
Uh, no, I think we hit on all the ones that have changed since the last.
That's it?
So the only thing I was gonna ask on the ditch clean out, you mentioned the rains flowing that down a little bit, what was the, I mean, it actually got wet enough, were there concerns about it?
Yeah, it got wet enough where it, and, uh, part of it was that Jeff, that Glacier's gonna haul it to his, his yard and his yard got wet, so he didn't have anywhere to put it.
Okay, figured it'd be more with just that.
That's the honest answer, that's the honest answer.
Gotcha, okay, fair enough, just making sure we can get that done too, so, all right. So anything else we need to do for you guys, the council here?
I have one more thing, Brent met with you guys the last time?
Yes.
On a comprehensive plan, and he put together some information on that and...
Do we have a status?
To do a comprehensive plan?
Okay.
To add that to our contract, if you guys wanted to do that besides the planning services or whatever, so...
Was he, he, was he gonna email that to us then too?
I thought he did today, but if not, I brought some copies here with, of what he sent over.
Oh, the proposal, is, this is a proposal for him to do, prepare the comprehensive plan, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
That, that, Damon?
Yep.
That's the completed updated plan from the old one?
Correct.
That we had that was maybe two thousand ten or something?
Two thousand six, I think.
Oh, is that all?
It was, it was, it was a two thou, comprehensive plan from two thousand eight, basically, so for twenty twenty-eight. What we're trying to do there is just update that thing. Take the good parts that we can use and update it.
And then there's supplemental to it, just if they, for the complaint, if they're...
Yeah, we probably won't take any action on this tonight, this is just more F Y I, cause we gotta read through it and, so, okay.
I do have one more thing, Corey, do, well, at the last meeting, I told you I'd, I'd get you an update on the lining project total cost to date. And the bid price for that project was eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. We had a hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars in contingency in that loan, so that puts it at nine hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. And my rough numbers, we're at about eight hundred and forty thousand right now, which is about twenty thousand more than what we, what we had in the base bid, but we've added quite a bit of work. By the time we, we fixed up the lift stations, did the lining and the epoxy coating on them, we can added all the SCADA systems to all of the, reporting to all the stations. We have done a lot of work for only a twenty thousand dollar run, so we're within our contingencies on that.
Okay.
Loan them up, so, wanted to give you an update on that before I forgot.
Okay. Good, well, I mean, this is not two hundred thousand dollars over, and that's otherwise we're, we're within spec, so... All right, anything else, Jim, that we need to do?
I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so we do want portfolio reports?
You want me to go first, you want...
From Sharon's absence, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, all right, so, um, first item that we wanna talk about is the, uh, the water meter funding proposal, so Vance, I'm gonna pull up your recommendation. Sent you right here, we talked about, talked about this, uh, I think last week at our, one of our budgeting meetings. So as of the cost estimate right now, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, uh, what we had discussed for the water meter, uh, cost. And, uh, Vance's recommendation is actually use, uh, at least seventy-five percent from our funds to, uh, to at least pay that portion, and which would leave about sixty, sixty-six thousand, so we can pick one of three options there to, uh, draw on some of the, the sales tax, you know, uh, to pay that off in a specific period of time. We can either get a loan for that, or we can just pay the balance with investment money on hand, so I guess that's one of the questions we just wanna ask. Do you, do you agree that we should go with the seventy-five percent draw on our investment? Or at least pay seventy-five percent of that or pay a hundred percent of it with investments? Or, uh, or do some, some portion of loan and payback on the, from the sales tax revenue? You guys have an opinion, one way or the other?
This project is on the intended use plan for the drinking water revolving fund, so you could use that for your fifty percent.
So we...
If you wanna get a loan, if it's at low interest, it'd be the same thing as the water looping, looping project.
See, that, we were not tying up all that capital, I wonder if we should go...
The whole thing?
No, you could, if you wanted to, it's on there in the full thing.
So it's listed on our S R F application?
It is on the, it's on the intended use plan that they, they put out for projects within that year, they have to prioritize.
So there's essentially no additional paperwork that we would have to complete?
Well, there's plenty of additional paperwork.
Well, that's what I'm asking, you're saying it's on the, on, on intended use plan, but that...
All that is, is we built out a little form and said, this is what it's gonna cost, this is what we're intending to do, and this is the time that we're gonna do it in. So it holds a place there, the money is somewhat allocated to that.
So, so the project is essentially semi-approved from the S R F, we could get S R F funding?
You could.
Two percent?
The, the money has been, has been, um, you know, earmarked for, for you, so, uh, yeah, barring, barring anything unforeseen, I would assume that it would be almost guaranteed.
Cause that doesn't tie up all of our funds like that, right, two percent?
With a half, with a half a percent for administrative.
Yeah, but still, that's, the open market's a lot of work.
Well, the question is then, is what is our payback strategy? Do we use funds from the water, water, uh, project? I mean, I'll, I'll go through that in a minute, but then do we do use the revenue or the, the funds that I've allocated for repairs and maintenance and so forth on an annual basis to pay that back? What would be the expected term on that, I guess?
Yeah, is that a ten year?
You can, you can, you can do, I think a ten, fifteen, twenty, and even a thirty year, but, uh, your components don't have a thirty year lifespan, so I wouldn't recommend that.
Right.
No, but...
We could even go fifteen or twenty and pay back early if need be.
Yes.
I mean, honestly, I think that's, we wanna look at longer terms and get it back early if we can.
I mean, that's what I would think, pay it down.
You know, we, we know the projects we've talked about recently.
Yep.
And what we have available.
I mean, even if we took, even if we took the ten percent, you know, the ten percent from the, uh, sales tax revenue, that gives us approximately, you know, twenty-five to twenty-six thousand dollars a year, that's ten years, and we'd have it paid off.
And we could accelerate that if we wanted to.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
If you can provide a funding mechanism to pay it back, that's, that's, you know...
Well, that's what I'm saying, as part of the application, we need to have to define how we're gonna pay that back, you, you will, because,
Yes.
Because if I state that it's, you know, our water revenue, you know, public finance authority's gonna laugh at me and say, no, I'm gonna turn you down thirteen seconds after that application goes in.
That was...
I don't think it'd take her thirteen.
Okay, maybe five seconds.
It'll be quick.
She's already told me that.
Very quick, you know that.
So...
But I mean, ten percent of that, of, cause that's infrastructure.
That's absolutely what it's intended for, sales tax and sales and use taxes absolutely was intended for, so it, it's just a matter of us saying we're going to allocate, you know, ten percent from this fund for the next ten years.
And what we're doing here, Mr. Mayor, is, you know, we're trying to come to some common ground, we need a starting point.
Yep.
This is extremely important. And I think what we're trying to do here is, yes, there's three examples, but I think what this board wants to do is, decide on something so Interstate can go ahead and look for bids and get this going.
Correct.
That's, that's what we're trying to do.
Correct, we still, we're still have to think on the other side too, that we're gonna have to pay for this somehow, you would get grumpy if we went too far with that, right?
No comment.
So just thinking it through, but we have to do it, we have to do it, that's, that's gotta get done, the water meter.
Yeah, so your assertion is we should pay for this from the funds we have, I mean, that's essentially Vance's position, is that we have the funds that we accumulated over a period of time and we can just use that and pay it off. So, that, and then we could recover that versus paying the loans. I could see both sides of the argument, I, there are benefits to both.
There are benefits to both.
We have other projects out that we do need that money for, and are we gonna be able to get a two percent loan on those?
Say that, what'd you say, John?
We're gonna have other projects coming, you know, we've had a lot of discussion about...
Yeah, hello, we're looking at a land issue here.
Yes, you know, that's the other thing, are we gonna be able to get a two percent loan on that? Where, are we better to get a cheaper loan where we can, and if we have to use those funds for land or whatever?
To pay it off, even if down the road, we decide to pay it off early, we can.
I just think it's too, we don't have all of it put together on, you know, from our previous meetings and our discussion. It's too early to jump and commit those funds, I would, in my recommendation. If we went ahead with a loan, we could always pay it back early, no harm, no foul.
Right, that's true.
And a two percent, I mean, that's just hard to pass up, I mean, I just...
The other thing is, we always, we always knew that that fund is kind of an emergency fund too, so what if something happened, we burned it on this and we go, we'd have to turn around, try and get...
Yep, that's...
So that's, that's my only concern there, being we're still at a two percent deal as opposed to like a four or five, then I'd be a little bit more...
You're exactly right, Corey, all Brian and I are trying to do here is throw out the option.
Agreed, absolutely, that's why we've gotta talk it through, I wanna make sure everybody understands what we're trying to do.
We know we're a year or two away. You know, we've got a couple of years here that we gotta limp through, and I think things will be a lot rosier for us.
Yeah, it would be better, but right now, we gotta tend to just pay attention to things, but I would think too that if that's part of that, on that intent, we could, we could apply.
If it's easy, if it's easy for us to ask that and it was already included, then I, I guess, I would rather just, it gives us more flexibility if we just borrow the money at this point.
Vance, do you see a downside to that, just other than having to pay some interest?
No, no, I don't, there is no downside, really, I mean, it's a project and that needs to be done. These three hundred plus funds that were accumulated by me over the last countless years?
Right.
Were made by determination, hey, we're under budget, I'm gonna move some money, earmarked for future growth and planning.
Right.
My thought was, this is future growth and planning.
It is, but being we're still at a two percent, all right, we can get that money through this.
I understand, yeah, I understand fully.
And we can pay it down early if we get, if we can do that, we can pay it down ahead of time, and that's what I'm looking at, is we should be able, at some point, we could probably kill that off.
Until we package out the other projects, you know, I just, I'd be nervous about pulling that out.
Okay.
Would we be able to get two percent again?
Jim, timeline, if we said tonight, let's go, are we looking, I mean, is it something we still get done this fall?
Well, it's inside work, so I think you could do it whenever, replacing the water meters is in the basement, so...
So, I guess, what do you, what, what are the next steps, if, if we decide that we wanna go down the loan path, what do you need from us to...
We would have to solicit, uh, comments from agents, various agencies, that takes a month, and then we'd have to do a public input meeting with a comment period that takes another month on top of that, for the comments to come back in, so, um, you know, probably end of the year, beginning of the next four weeks, we could really get to the point where we're approving anything. There is a lot of preliminary work.
Is that long?
It's a, it's a lengthy process.
Starting in August here, we would be...
When you're using S R F funds, those are, you gotta follow their rules.
Yes, if you want their money, you gotta jump there.
So we're probably looking at the first of the year.
Correct.
Probably.
Yeah.
Perry, what's up?
Uh, I was just gonna say that for the last about three and a half years, I've been passing out the new water meters. So they would've been installed in the new houses, so that number will bring the big number down a little bit. Cause everything that I did new houses on have all got new meters. They don't have the electronics hooked up because nobody wanted to do that, but the meters are there and they're plumbed in, so that's a little extra cost that is taken care of right now with the new housing.
Any idea how many?
How many new homes?
What?
How many new ones will probably be out there?
Preview's got all new ones, and River's Edge has got all new, well, River's Edge is Caserole.
Are we at twenty percent new meters? Twenty-five percent?
I would say you're closer to the seventy-five percent new meters, to be honest.
So it's just a matter of going in and installing the, the remote read head?
Uh, on those, otherwise they would be replacing the entire meter, includes that remote meter, but there are some other, you know, we had talked about maybe having a Caserole, read the meters or whatever else.
Right, well, it's gonna take, it's gonna take some time to go and negotiate those agreements and get those contracts in place anyway, right? But the fact of the matter is, is that if we go down this path, we've got best case scenario where this thing could go online is basically beginning of the year. December, January-ish, but it's all inside work anyway.
It is inside work, yeah, as far as I know.
Do you have something, Josh?
Yep.
Well, it is inside work, but if no one's ever worked those valves, they're not gonna work. If you bust a curb stop and you have to dig it up in the middle of winter, that's gonna be a hell of a mess.
That is a good concern, yeah.
Cause if you never move that curb stop, it's been sitting there for...
Why, why would it move the curb stop?
I mean, like you've gotta turn it to shut it off.
Oh, I see, you gotta shut it off, you gotta shut it off.
You can shut it off, it's a meter.
Can't you shut it off in, in the house?
If someone's never worked it out.
We're not talking about curb stops.
No, if you never turn that valve off in the house, it might not actually...
He's right, there might be something in the basement that... He's right. There might be something in the basement that isn't...
And most people never work those valves.
You're right.
Mine's up against the water here, I can't shut it off, so I need to figure out when to come move the water here.
He's not gonna have the one that I've been...
We're, we're gonna hear all sorts of stories, you know, when, when that day comes.
Through the water meter softeners and all that, yeah. I mean, there's some good discussion to be had.
Cause I wanted a new one when I got here, but they said, well, you can't shut it off, you know, wait till you, and I just haven't moved the water here yet, cause that's, that's right on what they wanna do.
That's what makes, yeah, the project harder. Okay, so...
They freeze the line, John. Them plumbers will freeze the line too. If they can't shut the valve off, they freeze the line.
They can, yeah.
And they pop them things on that way. I used to be the apprenticeship director for deploying people.
So at this point, okay, are we in agreement that we're gonna go down the path of doing the SRF funding?
I...
John?
I would think so.
Do, do we lose too much time by doing that?
Well, that's...
Well, I, that's, that was kinda my point. I hate losing this amount of time, but...
To get the solicitations out and that stuff is very minimal on our end, so I, I think if you're kinda wavering, I would just do it. Can't hurt to have them.
Okay.
Can always say, we're not gonna use your funding, so...
Yeah. I mean, I, I've got a timeline laid out, and I was anticipating that we were gonna try and get most of this, these meters installed in the October, December timeframe anyway. So we'll, we'll talk, okay, but do you need anything, do you need some project approval to move on?
Yeah, I think that you would need to, to tell us that you wanna use, you wanna go ahead with the SRF process and get the preliminary work of that going.
So I'm assuming I need to make a motion to proceed with, to direct Interstate Engineering to apply for an SRF funding mechanism for the water meter replacement?
Yep, and complete the preliminary work.
I'm sorry?
And complete the preliminary...
Oh, complete the preliminary engineering work, I guess you'd call it, just move it out. Okay.
Now, Lucas, we don't need a district on this one because it's gonna be funded with user fees?
Yes. Well, because it's not really user fees, it's sales and ta, sales and use tax.
Right, but it's not gonna be an assessment on the property.
Correct.
So we would need to create a district.
Right, okay.
Yep. You got that?
I don't have a second.
We got it done, George. Josh?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go, alright. Let's get the paperwork started there, Jim.
Alright, so that's, that, um...
That's a hurdle.
That was a, that was a hurdle, alright. Uh, oops, uh, let me look, oh, I gotta, okay, too many screens here. Alright, so now, we're gonna walk into the, the sewer water rate update. Uh, I actually put together, I'm gonna make it look like I know what I'm doing, you know?
Attaboy. You're good. All good.
Since I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do it as a PowerPoint for crying out loud. Hey, I spent time putting this together. Doggone, and I'm gonna present it this way. Okay, look at this, fancy graphics and everything. Ah, okay, can I hear it? Okay, thank you. Alright, so, uh, why change this now? So I'm doing this, granted, you guys are the guinea pig, but I'm doing this for the benefit of getting this out there for all the residents to be able to see this and, and check on, uh, why we're doing this. So, we're doing the, the water rate analysis and why are we doing this? The wa, city water and water rate budgets are, are not balanced. Uh, they, we've not been, uh, we basically, if you look at the top line there, uh, the last time we, uh, had a rate increase was 2010, and according to the Public Finance Authority, we were losing about a hundred thousand dollars a year, which isn't quite necessarily correct, because if you look at both funds together, uh, the, the city wa, water and the, the wa, wastewater, which means that the sewer line, uh, fees, uh, together, we were still, the city was still losing about twenty-one thousand dollars a year. Uh, and had, it has been increasing in, in, in recent years. So the challenge, and what we've been talking about, is that the Public Finance Authority would not allow state revolving funds to be used for operational. So meaning that if we were going to pay a loan based on water rates, uh, they wouldn't approve the loan because we were losing so much money on an annual basis. So she said, until you can prove that you've actually balanced that budget and balanced that income versus expense, uh, that we would not be able to get, uh, anything through, uh, through the, for the state revolving fund loans. So that was, that was one of the challenges, uh, that, and, and why we're approaching this, approaching this project now. Any questions on that? Russ?
Do you have to balance the water costs versus water income separately, the, the wastewater and wastewater costs?
In a moment. We'll, I'll, I'll answer that in a moment.
Okay.
So, so this, this is, this is part of the reason we're, we're making this change and, and, uh, wanted to talk a little bit more. So this is the current rate structure that we have today. One thing you'll notice, uh, you, you'll notice on here that the, the minimum, uh, it's for the first four thousand gallons, it's a six dollar rate, and then for up to ten thousand, and if there's no meter reading, there's a twelve dollar max, uh, that's charged to residents. Uh, and then, you know, comparable charge for the wastewater. Um, so these are the rates as they are today. Now, the table on the right, these are all the cities in our general area. So not only does the city of Horace have low water rates, we have the lowest rates in the entire state. There is no other city that charges less for utilities than Horace. And, and this is part of the challenge, why the Public Finance Authority said, your rates aren't low, they're just ridiculously low. You have to change this. You must change this.
Say, Brian, how long have your rates been at that?
I'm sorry, say again?
How long have our rates been that low?
Two thousand and ten, wasn't it?
They haven't changed since 2010, so they've been low, I would, I'm assuming, I don't know how much they changed in 2010.
I think we moved to three dollars, if I remember right.
The, the water?
Yes.
The water, so the base rate. It was three dollar to four, and then it went to six?
Yes.
So, yeah. It was, it was really, really cheap. It was, yeah, so anyway. And you could see, even by a lot of the other cities in our general area, the rates are, are much higher. And so even Caserole water rates, I mean, most of the residents that are living in our area are paying fifty on average, okay? Now, and what that water rate is, that's assuming an average use to, to level the playing field across all the cities, it's use, assuming six thousand gallons. So most, on average, most homeowners use about six thousand gallons a month. So they use, use that as a rate to say, okay, we're gonna use that as an, uh, an amount, and then, uh, so they can level the, the rate cost across, uh, all different cities. So it's an equal comparison. So this is, this is where we are. As you can see, we're far below what, what even our neighbors pay. Uh, so this is the proposed rate structure, uh, that I'm bringing forward to the council for consideration, uh, which changes the minimum charge from six dollars to twelve. So the, the impetus here is when I first started this process and I was looking at the rate changes that needed to happen, the, the amount for budgeting or for balancing the water, uh, fund, the changes were really high, right? To get that fund, that portion of the fund to balance. But then when I factored in the wastewater, then that changed the equation, right? So what it effectively did is you look at the, the minimum charge and the per gallon charge, uh, the rates go up quite a bit on the water, but you look at the wastewater and, and the surcharges, it goes down quite significantly. Okay, so it balanced, adjusting the rates, because if you look at the expenses that we have for the cost of delivery for the water, we need to balance or take some of those funds and get them into that water income to fund that cost of delivery, but our expenses for, you know, dealing with wastewater are much less. So that's where reducing the rates, uh, on the, on the wastewater shifts that cost over to, to the water delivery. So overall, it is, it, it reduces the impact of, of those overall changes, uh, overall rate increases. Steve?
Two questions. Uh, those are monthly rates?
These are monthly rates.
Under, once we connect to the super sewer line and go to Fargo, will those rates cover the cost of going to Fargo?
Expected to cover that. Now, in the next slide, next slide, you'll notice, so this, this is a projected budget. So you, you noticed before that we were running about a twenty thousand dollar deficit in this account, uh, with these proposed rates, and you noticed that the wastewater income is significantly lower than it was before, but the, the water income is significantly higher. So it's essentially taking those, that revenue and shifting it in, in between those two accounts to offset. But there is an increase, so the table in the bottom, uh, or I should make a point out that this does include about thirty-five thousand dollars a year for water improvement. So let's say, for example, the water tower needs some work, uh, we would be able to, you know, this income would cover a planned rework effort of thirty-five thousand dollars a year to cover those costs. Uh, if there's wastewater work, debt payment, whatever it is that needs to be done, it would allocate almost twenty thousand dollars for that work that would need to be done. Uh, and then again, this is an annual basis, so uh, uh, the, the formulas and the calculations that go into this actually come from the North Dakota Rural Water Association. Uh, they have a formula, a, a process that they go through to assess these, and they recommend, uh, percentages for, uh, rework and, and fixing. So we basically followed their recommendation, uh, for setting aside debt payment and, and reserves for, uh, fixing issues along the way. So the table in the bottom is an example. Uh, what we did is if we said, what are our water and sewer rates today? For the cost of, you know, for, this is the average bill for the residents. Water today is twenty-seven twenty, twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents, uh, and that would go to thirty-seven sixty. And then the wastewater, uh, would go from twelve ninety to sixteen, so a small increase there. Uh, but what this effectively did is by shifting some of those costs, uh, it, it, it would have gone up, the water rate would have gone up much higher, uh, but this is trying to minimize that impact. But it is a fairly significant increase. Yes?
In the future, mo, most of our growth, uh, increased our wastewater costs without affecting our water income?
Correct, it will.
Is it, is it gonna stand up under this system for that to happen?
That, that factors into, that factors into the, you know, the cost of delivery of that water, that effluent to Fargo. Right, so, so for example...
What I'm saying is, almost all the newer areas are gonna be on Caserole water.
Right. Yep, so we won't see that income.
We won't, we won't.
But if that, if they use ten thousand gallons in a month, we will charge them that ten thousand for wastewater processing. So that, that we would see that income.
Are you gonna get those figures from Rural Water then?
Those figures from Rural, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes. When they're hooked in, right? Cause right now, today, they're, they're not hooked in. Those residents aren't, you know, so that'll be part of the coordination, once we get to that point and start booking in the outside of the delivery area, they're gonna have to start, we'll have to start collecting that.
Because basically, our water delivery area is gonna have very little growth.
I, I, so you're right. Or none.
The only growth is gonna be, uh, that direction.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. Nope, you're right.
With going to digital meters, do you expect to have more or less income? Cause I mean, right now, everybody has to tell you, I don't know, they give you an honest number or accurate number, they forget to add that zero to the number.
So that, that was actually one of the things that we'll have to do in this process, when that train, changeover happens. If somebody's been misreading their meter along the way, we're just gonna have to have one month where we just do a catch-up. Just, okay, we're not gonna, you know, just assume, if it goes way too high, we're just gonna assume the max and just let it go, and that'll be the changeover, and that'll be the new baseline, and we move forward. So that, what you'll notice though, is this does remove the maximum. So for example, there are, there are some businesses in town that actually use like, uh, thirty-nine thousand gallons in a month, okay? And I, I'm sure the church probably uses that volume as well. Today, their bill is around a hundred and thirty dollars a month. Uh, you know, under, with this, with this structure, in the future, under the new structure, it would go to about two hundred and ten, something like that. So the businesses, those heavy water users are gonna see the greatest impact of this change. So, Steve, you have a question?
Are you gonna allow the two meter option, the one that drains into waste, the one that does not?
Yard sprinklers.
You know, yard sprinklers, spools, or all that other stuff, you know, where they use a lot of water that normally, that some of that extra does not go into the wastewater system.
Do we have that?
We haven't got that far yet, Steve.
I, I don't know, I don't know that we have that ability to measure to...
No, but currently, first supports in two meters, you put in a...
Yeah, if you're gonna, like, say you're gonna irrigate your yard, that water doesn't go in your sewer, so you can...
Well, I, there again, we, we'd have to invent a billing mechanism to allow, to figure out how we read that, and we don't have that today. So the other, the other thing that I did include here, um, is I saw that most cities across the state do charge a connection fee, which we did not have in the past, so I did include a line item for a hundred and twenty-five dollar connection fee, because the first time, Perry, we gotta go buy a meter and get it installed and, you know, so...
That, on new houses, you know, that's fifteen hundred dollars.
So if that's included, that's supposed to carry...
That's on permit fee, and I've been doing that ever since the few folks up there...
So that fifteen hundred dollars is supposed to cover their water connection as well?
Yes.
Yep, water and sewer.
Okay, so I'll take this up.
Before, we're only charging two hundred and fifty dollars a ride.
Okay.
Yes, we can do that.
Were you folks up there authorized to go to fifteen hundred? That's what I would do.
Okay, so I'll move that.
Yeah, I, I would remove that, and also, Brian, you got three thousand gallons on trailer courts. It's five.
That's what it's, that's what it is today, so...
I'm only doing five thousand.
So the, the one, and actually, that's a point of debate, where we can talk about that. Um...
Those are, those are metered.
Correct, so that was, I don't know how we wanna talk about this, but essentially, can we, and I'm looking at the engineers to say if we could do this, can we create a meter connected where those trailer courts and have one meter that services them?
Yes.
And we basically bill the trailer park, trailer court owner?
Yep.
And it's up to them. We, we bill the owner, he, and how he distributes those fees to the trailer parks, that's his problem.
Yep.
But we bill the owner to get that money back, and it, it's a question. Because the, the way that they get special rates, I, it's not really fair to everyone else, because they use just as much water as everyone else, and costs them the same for water delivery just as everyone else.
It would make it simpler as far as, um, we are concerned.
Right.
Over, we tried this a number of years ago, and if you think you've had hurdles before, you will have one.
Well, and then, so I don't know that we necessarily need to solve this problem tonight.
And we don't.
But it, it's something where I, I think we need to keep the trailer park usage on the same playing field as what everyone else does.
Okay.
And how we do that, I, I don't know.
I can see that, yeah.
Right, so we, we need to talk about that a bit more. That is one action that needs to happen.
Yep.
Okay, so let's, let's keep moving. So this gives you an idea of the proposed rates. So the next steps, uh, what I had, uh, proposed is approve and implement the water meter replacement project. That's one of the next things we have to do. Uh, we need to contract with Caserole Water to remo, do the remote read of those meters. Uh, that's the proposal, uh, on the table today. Since they have the equipment, training, everything to do that, they're in the neighborhood, it'd be an easy transition to start that process, rather than us purchasing the equipment, so that would cut a little bit of the cost off the project. Uh, we would have to do, like we pointed out, the meter recalibration. Uh, so we say, if somebody's been misreading all along, and, you know, we'll get that catch-up. We'll have to do a one-month catch-up on, on those reading, meter reading, meter values. Uh, and then obviously, we gotta approve the, the rate and wastewater rate structure, and then roll that out. So I'm proposing for a timeline, and again, subject to, you know, we're, we've started this process in March. Uh, we're reviewing that rate proposal today, uh, and then I had thrown out the October to December for the water meter deployment, and then making this effective January twenty eighteen. Shoot holes.
No, well, we've been talking about this for, like I said, since beginning of the year, so I mean, this is nothing new.
So that's the proposal, right, today. I don't know that we're necessarily looking for a approval of this. We obviously have some tweaks that we need to do, but does anybody see any major issues with moving to that new proposed rate structure? There again, the goal is to balance those two budget funds.
Which we have to do.
Which we have to do. We've been told by the Public Finance Authority, we have no choice. We have to balance those.
I think the way you've got that structured too... I think the way you've got that structured too, where you're showing that the water and the sewer separate, and how you're kind of balancing that. That gets an idea of what we're, what we're dealing with and how we're separating out that cause.
Right, let's see, this one.
That one, yeah, so.
I mean, it's, there again, we're not here to make a bunch of money, we're here to just balance a budget, this is supposed to be.
We can't run that thing in the deficit.
Right.
It's just not, I mean, there's been no rate increase for what, seven years?
At least seven years worth, and, and.
What else doesn't?
I, I plan to start this process or make it a much more abbreviated process, uh, on an annual basis to review how we're doing.
Yep.
So, we will publish this as proposed rates, and I, I'm not sure what next steps we need to go through. From a resolution standpoint, it's pretty easy to change the rate structure. So it's just a matter of us getting that document, you know, making our final tweaks, uh, you know.
So what do you wanna do about the trailer park? Will you guys, we wanna discuss that a little bit more? That's, that's the only one I can see right now.
Vance, what do you think? Should we set up a meeting with the, the trailer park owner?
I think we would have to.
Yeah, I think.
I know that we was against that at one time, but I, I will not speak for him.
Okay, okay, so I think we should set up a, a, one of the next steps to get that approval.
Agreed.
The other thing is, is, the other thing, if, and nobody pointed it out, but, uh, is that we're removing the maximum. So the no-meter read, that basically goes away, cause we're getting accurate readings from every home every month, so the, the max reading goes away.
Yep.
People are paying for actual usage.
And the, the, Brian, the reason that previous boards implemented that ten thousand, it was to, to promote, to, to make people read their meters. You know, if I charge them twenty dollars more than they should, maybe that'll be an incentive for them to read.
Read a meter.
It really didn't make any difference.
Nope. When, when fifty-three, fifty-three percent of the homeowners in the city do not report their meter reading. Uh, okay, that tells you that our rates are so cheap that it's not worth the time and effort, so they just pay it. All right, so that's that one.
Yep.
Uh, city address issue. So Perry, I don't know if we wanna.
I could give you a little report if we want, and then I, let me go on this.
Let me just, let me just throw, get, give, for everyone's benefit, to just get an idea of what's going on here. Uh, the address issue is related to, uh, for addressing for new developments that are, uh, coming in, such as Lost River. Uh, plots, uh, you know, when the, a lot number or a street address is assigned, you know, when that plot is, is created. The problem is, is that that effort then goes to Cass County, and also the city of Fargo.
Nine-one-one, city of Fargo, there's a bunch of them.
So they actually go through a process of.
Postal system also.
Updating the GIS maps to actually put the lot and house number and address and so forth in all the nine-one-one systems and post office and all those systems. Well, they've been doing that for the city of Horace forever, and all of a sudden, now they've said, nope, we're not that interested in, in continuing to maintain this for the city anymore. So they want the city to take over responsibility of naming and numbering your streets, houses, et cetera.
I had a meeting, uh, I'd scheduled it with Cory and me and Brent and Hallie and Jason, the county engineer. And Cory was out of town, I believe, and so me and Brent, Brent was on conference and I was there. And in a nutshell, in a short version, they're not saying they won't do it. They just gotta, the county commission wants to know how much time Hallie's gotta spend on this, and, uh, and, uh, what kind of, we have to set up a grid, uh, and decide, what are we gonna start with our addressing and then work our way out? Um, and as the West Fargo planner stated, um, he said, we tried to do that back when I was mayor in two thousand, two thousand four. And of course, the people protested that whole deal big time, and so the council decided not to do it, that's when we should've did it. Now that's not done, and we were working along pretty good when it was only five or ten lots in a subdivision. Now we had four hundred to get addressing to, and we can't put the wrong address on there, we gotta get a right address. So, in a nutshell, they just wanted a letter stating that we were interested, we'd like to have the county do it. And, um, and that, uh, they had some guidelines, and Brent had it on the letter, I don't have a copy of that letter that he sent to you, Cory. And, uh, but I think there should be just a little bit more discussion whether I do it or how we go about it. Prior to when that goes to this county commission on, uh, on, you know, uh, what our intent is, will we be willing to set up a grid program with a, you know, with a set of standards? And work from that, that makes life a lot easier, it's a lot faster, it's a lot less time for whoever's doing it. We asked Brent if he was interested in taking it over, he said not, that's not my expertise, is what he told the county engineer and myself. And, um, so if we can, like I said, if we can come up with a good plan, I think the county would still do it for us. The one thing they were concerned is that they don't do that much for Castle Town, they don't spend that much time for Mapleton, so they, if they're gonna dedicate it, the county commission has to know about it. And then, you know, what kind of dollars and cents, we're gonna have to pay somebody to do it. Uh, and as Kent said, you can do it, and Kent said, no, everybody's gonna be screwed up, and, uh, you know, our engineer. And so, like I said, uh, long as we're willing to pay and we're willing to sit down and set up a standard and a grid, I think they'll work with us. At least on the short term, you know, for maybe the next year or the next six months, so.
What, what this really does is it, it highlights the fact that we're, if we're gonna go into this heavy grid growth phase of a lot of new developments, a lot of new homes coming out here, getting a GIS system process, what's that, whatever, in place so that we can take on this ownership, because in reality, we should be doing this. We've been leaning on the county forever to get this done, but at what point does the city decide, okay, we should have a, a Horace address, not Sixty-Fourth Avenue South based on Fargo? At what point should that address be a Horace address instead of a county rural address as it is today? So, but that basically means that if we start down that path, that could possibly mean that everybody's address would change because it would now be a Horace address. Street names would probably, could possibly stay the same, but it means a house number would probably be renumbered because the reference point would be changed.
Streets are changing also.
The what?
Streets are changing also.
That's the thing, so in reality, we should be having the responsibility of managing that information and submitting it to whoever, right? So at what point does it make sense for that new coordinate system, the new grid system, to be put in place? Standards, policy, guidelines, et cetera, so that we manage it and we coordinate it with the county and all the emergency services and everything?
But it's gonna take us. It's gonna take us a little bit of time to work with the county yet to get to that point. And my advice, just because I've been messing with this address, they kinda handed it to me. Is, my advice is we do everything possible to see if we, if the county commission and Hallie and Jason, uh, would keep doing it at least probably for the next six months or the next year, until we can get all that grid program set up. And then at that point, as Brian would say, then we take ownership.
But we, we, but we've gotta show them a plan.
Yeah.
That we're going to start down that path.
Yeah.
And right now, we don't have a plan.
Right.
So that's the fundamental issue.
Do you folks up there feel that, that if, let's say I went to the county commission, do you feel that, uh, or just to Jason Benson, he takes it to county commission? Do you feel that you would move forward and set up a set of, help set up a set of standards and be willing to do that with a grid program? So we can move on and we'll make life a whole lot easier?
Well, I, I think the next step is for us to go have a meeting with those, whoever the representatives are at the county, to have this discussion. So I, I don't, I don't even know what we're, if by saying that, I don't even know what that means, saying yes, we're gonna go do it.
We're not prepared to make any of those decisions till we go talk to them first.
I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna make, say yes or no until we actually have a conversation.
I understand, this is a big, this is a big decision. But if you guys want, I will contact Jason and whoever and see who all, who all at the county do we have to have in that meeting? I don't know who all they want in that county meeting, do they want the whole county commission? Do they want somebody to do a presentation before the county commission, but I can get them details and we pour them back to you? If you want.
I mean, I, I can reach out to them too, I, I don't know.
I don't care, I don't care, I'm just giving you an idea.
I, I think we should just reach out to them, I.
Maybe just send an email.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try and set up a meeting, I'll try and set up a meeting and get that, get that moving along.
Okay.
So we can, we can at least scope this thing, cause I, I don't even know how big a problem this is. I'm trying to understand that, Russ.
I, I think that if you send out the information later on that you're gonna have everyone in town change their addresses. I think the next city council probably won't be doing that. I, I, I'm not laughing.
I know, it's a massive change.
You have anything what it takes for one individual to change his address?
I get it, I get it. But, okay, do you wait for another thousand homes or another five hundred homes in the city to, to change that? When, when does it become not a Horace rural, you know, Fargo rural to a Horace address?
I have a Horace address on Seventy-Sixth Avenue.
But the reference point is downtown Fargo.
Yeah, and I really like it that way. No, I really like it.
I get it, I get it.
No, but think about, we've got, we've got Sixty-Fourth, well, we've got Sixty. Let's go back, we've got Fifty-second, we've got houses on Fifty-second, on Sixty-second, on Sixty-fourth, on Seventy-sixth, on Eighty-eighth, on a Hundredth. Everybody outside of Old Horace has a Fargo address. I'd say just leave it alone and just continue, everything outside of this block area, in other words, everything that way.
But that's where all the new development is?
No, no.
But then you're keeping a Fargo address for all the new developments?
Exactly, totally.
You're, 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 you're continuing the problem.
No, it isn't a problem. No.
Depending on who you ask, the county is saying it's an issue.
Brian, you'll find out that information on what you can do and what you can't do when you have that meeting.
Okay.
Cause that's where the issue comes up.
The, the county just wants some say over that, that when you're bringing a street in, that they don't have another street like that someplace.
Fair, but you also gotta have a consistent numbering thing so that nine-one-one services know what address it is.
Nine-one-one service know what address it is because of the GIS system, which gets put in with your.
Who do you think manages the GIS system? We got, the county is doing that for us, and that's what they're saying is they wanna give up.
They don't wanna give it up. What we, the meetings we, that we had, what they said was, they just wanna know, do you want us to continue doing this? If so, say so, because we're gonna have to put some numbers into the C, to the county commission to let them know what this is, what our time is costing, and the city of Horace may end up having to pay some of that.
Okay.
That's a whole lot easier than, than, than causing every person in the city to go through a royal pain.
I get it, I get it, but the further you kick this can down the road, the bigger the problem becomes.
No, it doesn't actually.
Steve, what do you have?
Um, I lived through Minot when we did the nine-one-one, uh, plan. And, uh, some of the stuff that was done is to, out of the center city of Minot, they said, okay, similar like to what? Fargo's done right now, we went out and we just spread out. So we ended up with three places that had one-oh-five Main Street or one-hundred-and-twenty-eighth, the same number, to cause confusion. Uh, the city and county in Denver went through hell, and they also went further out into Rapafoe and Adams County, keeping the same number system growing out, which made it real easy for you to know where you were going and gridding and stuff, so it really helped. And I would recommend, as long as the city and county court, I said, excuse me, the county of Fargo or Cass County is willing to manage the numbering system, then it makes it a lot easier and cleaner. So you know where a hundred is, and you don't have, you know, the different numbering systems. And I'm just making, from my experience of having worked on the nine-one-one side, the emergency management side and stuff. And they, they, they spread it out throughout the whole gray area, it really simplified a lot of stuff over the long run. But they, but it was, it was a handshake of, okay, who's gonna renew what? Town of Burlington did renumber, and it still poses mail delivery, because my house in Minot, I still get mail for people who live in Burlington. Because we have the same number.
Yeah?
Yeah, I think we should have that conversation.
So, that's, next step, so anyway, we aren't gonna solve the problem here, so, anyway, uh, we'll just do a quick update. Uh, so essentially, that, that's the next step. So, a quick update from the, the regional wastewater, uh, which we are a part of. The next steps for them to, to move along with, uh, the West Fargo, so they've basically made the comment that, uh, West Fargo and Horace and Mapleton are in the process of getting the sewer agreements, uh, in place. Uh, and, and they're working on detailed connections, uh, for West Fargo. Uh, and we've basically got our plans in place, so everything's good there. Uh, so we did talk about, uh, there was a discussion about the, the connection for the future Forty-Fifth Street Interceptor. Um, so reaching, reaching from basically what we had talked about, uh, but we do need to set up a meeting with West Fargo to talk about the Sixty-Fourth connection that would go from the Wilds Ninth area over down Sixty-Fourth over to Forty-Fifth, so that could be a potential future connection path that was discussed with West Fargo and, and Fargo. So, quick update, that's all, all I wanted to bring up there. The good news is, we're actually having really good conversations with them, so.
Yeah, that's good. Real good.
That's it.
Good, good. Davis, oh, John, what do you got?
Dave, uh, Mr. Mayor, I could maybe speak for Dave here, I'm sure he wouldn't mind.
Go ahead.
Uh, of course, we're interviewing as, for assistant auditor, we started with fifty-one applicants. Narrowed it down to ten, eleven, or twelve, and now we have narrowed it down to three.
Okay.
So we will expect, I think this board will expect, uh, that an offer will be made, I'm gonna say sometime toward the end of the month. So.
Okay.
That's where we're at on that.
Good. Need some qualified candidates in, uh, that's fifty-one, huh?
Lots.
Good, that's good to hear, I'm glad we got that pool.
We will have a good person.
All right.
That's awesome.
Boy, it must be nice to have a pool to pick from.
Yeah, I mean, that's great, I'm just glad we really would do that.
Yep.
You, you could send the other ones my direction.
Okay.
Send the number to your.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Um, for me, I guess there really aren't many things new to report right now, I've just been in conversation with Brent. And just kinda following up with what we had talked about from the prior meetings here, so nothing new on that front. So, uh, hopefully, there'll be more here in the middle of the month. All right, uh, Perry, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, I kinda put a, I put a, a little list together just to give you, just to give the public a little idea of what's been going on. Uh, the permits issued to date to sixty-seven, the new homes are three this month, home additions are one, basement finish is one. Garage is two, fence is one, and deck was one, but the values still come up to one million eight-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars for the month. Uh, that's the, uh, yeah, should I say, the estimated value?
What? Three new homes?
Yep.
Wow.
Well, one addition was for five-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, so that helps. That's an addition.
That's not an addition.
Yeah, that's an addition. Uh, we talked about the addressing, we all got that handled? Oh, John?
Perry, say one thing, could you change this around just a tish and do a month and then a year to date? Uh, you, you've got the permits issued to date sixty-seven, but break that down, new homes monthly and then new homes year to date?
Yeah, I can.
Could you do that?
Yeah, I'll put something together and I'll show you before the meeting.
Perfect.
Okay, uh, permit fees, there, there's one permit fee that I think we should address. You know, you get a house, like, let's say Prairie View, it's a small house, and maybe you wanna put a bathroom in, we charge them two-hundred dollars. Uh, that, that, uh, five-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar addition, that's only two-hundred dollars. I suggest that we use a P schedule like we do for accessory buildings and anything over five thousand, a hundred dollars. And that's the smallest projects, we take care of that way. And then anything above five thousand and ten thousand dollar value is, uh, two-hundred dollars. But then anything over that dollar amount, we use three dollars per thousand. hundred dollars, but then anything over that dollar amount, we use three dollars per thousand. We use that fee schedule for a house permit, we use that fee schedule for a garage permit and accessory buildings. I think that it doesn't have to be, uh, uh, should I say a decision tonight, but I think that's something you should think about, because I don't think it was fair, because if that would've been a five hundred and ninety thousand dollar home, that permit fee would've been eight, thirteen hundred dollars for an example, so I think, uh, to make it more fair for everyone, I think we should think about it. There's a lot of different ways you could do it, but this is close to what our neighbors are doing too, so, that's all I got.
Could I ask Russ, when we went through our permit fees, am I mistaken or did planning and zoning, kinda give a recommendation on that?
I did it and then Dave took a look at it and then Dave presented it for part of it.
I think the zoning, that really doesn't do fees, that.
Yeah.
I thought, I just, I was trying to remember.
We had talked, we had talked about it.
Yeah.
But none of us really have enough information on it to make those kind of decisions.
There, if I could comment one more thing, we did this permit fee thing in two different sections, we changed the permits for new housing and that sort of stuff at one time when you guys made a decision that you accepted my numbers and then we went and then Dave, I give him the information and he set up the permit fees for zoning changes, variances and that, so it was kinda doing a two-part system. And so that's how the permit fees have got changed to what they are right now and they've been working quite well, this is the only one that I see that I don't think is quite fair, but that's up to you guys, but that's it, that's all I got.
Okay, all right. We can, I mean, we can look down.
I think it makes sense, I think it makes sense along with everything else, the way we've done the other items.
I mean, I'm thinking about what, what do we need to do to, you know, present these or with the rate structure?
Probably just to revise the.
Is it, is it a resolution? We have a resolution?
Yeah, that's in the ordinance, yeah.
So we do, is it an actual ordinance or is it a resolution?
It's not, it's not.
Okay, okay.
I'd say that we should probably wait till everybody's back there and we can just go over this.
Yeah, let everybody have a.
So maybe, maybe get this into a resolution format that we could.
Yeah, I'd say put it in a resolution format and get it out prior to the next meeting so everybody has a chance to digest it a little bit and we can have a conversation at our next meeting.
Yep.
So.
Then what we'll do, our office will just take those numbers and then create a table for, very to use them.
Yeah, and go from there.
Perfect.
Okay. All right, Perry, you're good?
Yep, I'm good.
All right, Adam, what do you got, anything?
Uh, nothing real exciting.
I like that.
I spent a lot of time with Kemper and, uh, uh, the other guys in the sewer, uh, only thing I've got is, have we heard, being it's already August, have we heard anything back from, uh, Gary about cleaning up his, uh?
Yeah, we did.
We talked about that before you got here.
Yeah, we can, I can update you after the meeting on that.
That's pretty much all I got, I think, up to exciting.
All right, so that brings us down to you, Vance.
Uh, assuming that, uh, uh, the September, the first meeting in September will not be the fifth, I have scheduled a public hearing on the eighteen budget for the eleventh.
Okay.
Are we meeting, I guess I'm asking if we're gonna meet that, assuming we are, we typically do a week later.
I thought we were just doing the Tuesday.
I think that's what we were thinking for September, was doing the Tuesday. I know, I know what we did for July, but I'm wondering.
I have to notify Cass County on our hearing.
So we just have to, we'd have to postpone it from the fourth to the eleventh.
Well, isn't the fourth a holiday?
Yeah.
Well, the fourth is all, if we could do the fifth, that would be great.
So we shift both meetings in to the eleventh and twenty-fifth end up, but then we're over top of the parks and rec that?
Yeah, see what I'm saying, we move to the fifth and keep the eighteenth, move the first one over a day.
Oh, so keep, keep the eighteenth, but then meet on the fifth instead of the eleventh?
Yeah, cause otherwise we're getting in a, uh, park board.
Yeah.
I'd rather we just move it off a day, if that's all right.
It's up to you.
Um, you'll be around on the fifth then?
Yes, I will, but I won't be here on the eighteenth.
So what is the fifth?
Let's do it the fifth.
Okay.
You guys all right with that?
Yep.
Do the fifth, and I'll keep the eighteenth though.
And other than that, I have not done with the financials yet, so I really don't have anything else that's earth shattering, I guess.
Okay.
As long as you have anything else earth shattering, then we're probably good, what the rest of you guys? Anything else we gotta talk about tonight?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, made a motion, second all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Done.